Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order. The transcriptionists can tell our voices apart. I'll let her know who's here. To my left is Emmanuel Deskalakis, Mike King, Mike Baptiste, and over on my right, Mark Bianco, Richard Swenson, and of course, Ken Youno is here along with Charlie Rowley and myself. If anyone's recording, would they make it known? First item on the agenda this evening, meeting minutes of July 22nd.
I wasn't here.
Motion to sign the minutes for July 22nd as written.
Motion was made by Mike Baptiste, seconded by Mike King. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So moved. This is the... Let's see, 10th, 11th, 12th, 13th. Next item up is A&R on map 111, lot 1,000, AD make peace, Tyhonet Road.
Say, George, I just wanted to let you know that I left some paperwork that I was going to pass out to the board at the... for the meeting tonight. If I could go back to the office and pick that up. You folks can conduct other business while you're waiting. I have the MyLives and I have the ability to answer the questions that you have, but I did have a couple of 11x17s for you that reflect the changes we made on the A&R plan. I wanted to share those with you.
These are the original, not the corrected?
Those are the original. We just showed the limits of the traveled way within the parcel. And I just have that on an 11x17 for you folks to look at. And then we were just going to discuss the meeting that we had on August 2nd with the site inspection on the suitable width grade construction element. So those were the two things. And the existence of the way being in existence prior to 1951. I have a USGS quad sheet from 1939 that shows Tyhonet Road throughout the property.
Are there substantial changes in the A&R?
The only change on the A&R was the dotted line that depicts the width of the traveled way as it is located within that parcel, parcel one. And that was the only change to that plan.
Lloyd feels they need to see that? Pardon me? Lloyd feel they need to see those changes or...
I have it on the presentation board if you... If my approach and just show...
Yeah, that'll be fine.
What we added. We just added that, the dotted... Limits of the traveled way on the plan.
Bill, correct. So this is what I drove by, right?
Yes. I think we can move ahead, George.
I know you and I were at the site visiting. I don't know if anyone had opportunity to go on their own.
I want to know.
Yeah, I will know soon.
So you're familiar with these... Talking.
And I also have a copy of the USGS quad sheet from 1939 that indicates...
And I only have one copy of it that indicates Tyhonet Road as it existed. Then it was surveyed in 1934, 1935. And this is the 1939 copy of the quad sheet that indicates Tyhonet Road here where it was... Where it's laid out. And then it extends the dotted line up through Frogfoot around and then Tyhonet Road as opposed to the large tract in Plymouth, Carver. So that's where it shows up, at least on the plan. It's probably a way that was in existence prior to the adoption of subdivision. Yeah, good.
Questions, Charlie? Frogfoot reservoir in Plymouth or is it in Wareham?
Is it more in Plymouth, would you say? I would say that it's predominantly in Plymouth. Plymouth and Carver more so than Wareham. Everything to the east of the One Kinko River is essentially Plymouth. That being south of the South Line, South Line Road. Make a motion. Move to endorse the plan? Excuse me. It's the label of... Phil, how do I define it?
Tyhonet Road, map 111, lot 1,000.
Thank you.
His a motion, is her a second? Motion's been made by Emmanuel, seconded by Mike Baptiste. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Spring for a new pen. Emmanuel has a plan already. 33 Farmers Lane.
What's that?
There we go. All right. Good evening for the record, John Churchill, J.C. Engineering. We're trying to divide map 93, lot 1,018 off of Farmers Lane. It's about a five acre piece into two lots. Currently, it's one lot down towards the end, towards the railroad tracks on the right. And what we've done is we created a two acre parcel and about a three and a half acre parcel out of this, lot one, lot two, as shown on the plan. So we have the 180 foot frontage on one and almost 500 feet of frontage on the other.
Want to point out that the circle, the developable circle at the same distance as the frontage is supposed to be all upland, but the planning board has the right to waive that requirement.
What do you mean upland?
Non...
Oh. Sorry.
Upland? Yeah, upland. Downhill.
Right. The purpose of that circle is to create sort of a... Not have a hockey sticks, if you will. And if you look at the plan, these two lots are not hockey sticks. They are providing enough upland area for two house lots. I will note that the water department did better. This parcel has two betterments as well in anticipation of two lots being there. Just so they have two betterments on this property as well.
Shape factor for lot two, how come it's not over again touching the boundaries?
Excuse me?
How come it's all the way to the boundaries?
Instead of being right in the middle of the property?
Being up against the lot line. You have the left hand.
Just because that's pretty much where the house is going to be situated in that area, basically. You know, that's about 100. From the wetland line to the property line in that area, you have about 120 feet. So you need to meet the 30 foot no touch for conservation. So basically, we've just shown a description of pretty much where the house is. Think the... If you look at the size of the property here, that circle is 180 feet. You know, so it gives, I guess, the large acreage of the property. You still have over an acre of upland for lot two. And you have 71,000 square feet, which is almost an acre and a little under two acres for lot one of upland. So you have, you know, there's three acres of upland on this property. And the minimum lot size is 60,000 square feet. So on lot one, you have 10,000 square feet of wetlands. And as you see, lot two has, you know, substantial amount of wetlands. Doesn't preclude us from, you know, sighting the house well outside the 30 foot no touch for conservation. You know, you can put a reasonably sized house there, 20 foot setback from the side property line. You know, 40 foot house, 60 feet, you're still over 70 feet from the wetland line.
That's your setback.
Doesn't have much space left to build.
Charlie, do you look at these plans?
I just saw it.
Pardon me?
I just saw it.
For the first time?
August Massett says Swift Lane. Does that change to Farmers Lane later on?
Swift Lane was the old name for it. Basically, it was a... It's a town road. Farmers Lane is actually a town layout, I believe, 1950, 19... Rowley's office had a plan, 1970, okay. It was Swift Lane. It's been... There's a layout that was followed, but it's a town, townway.
The choice of the house.
It was changed name to Found Lane.
Technically, he does have... He does have available space to put a reasonably sized house in.
No garage. This dimension...
This dimension is...
I guess I'm... Could be, yeah.
Farmers Lane crosses over the railroad tracks and there's a couple more, I believe, one or two, at least one house beyond this property over the railroad tracks, maybe two.
So if you put the house...
It could be against that line.
Against that line, that would give you the length that you need to put a house and garage and still have a driveway out onto the main road. It'll still be outside of that.
Any idea what size house they're planning to put there?
What I believe is going to be a modest sized house. I mean, due to the size, you know, the area of the wetlands and things like that, I'd believe probably a 40 foot wide house, maybe. Something like that, 26 by 40. That area's capes and ranches, I believe, in that area.
50 by... There's a four...
Excuse me?
Not sewored.
It is not sewored, no. One lot has about 470 feet of frontage. The other lot has 180 feet. So we definitely meet the frontage requirement on a townway. Area wise, like I said, we're two acres and close to, you know, almost three, four acres of land. So we meet those requirements.
Mine is just need a driveway.
12 feet.
You would make a same there. We wouldn't have this one right here. I think we had enough room to stay at exactly 30 and then put a typical sized driveway. And so we would not have to cross the line to do it. Because that seems to be defensible. I mean, we got all the room we need and we had to build structures, so we got a bit of driveway left below.
So here's the no touch zone.
And what's that distancing?
25. The only place they can build is here.
What's zoning in this area, the R13?
It's R60. No, I'm sorry.
It's R60. 60,000 square feet, 48,000 square feet of upland, 180 feet of frontage.
So here, he's got 20 feet. He's got 20 feet. So he can have a width of 60 feet.
Bear with me. I'm naive and new to this, but when you outline your 180 foot circles here, you could have positioned it to show a lot more upland versus wetland.
Yes, I could have pushed it definitely more towards the northwest, if you will, into that area. So it has...
That confuses me.
Okay, yeah, no, we definitely could have hugged the property line, absolutely, up against that. But I just wanted to make the board aware that we are asking for a waiver from that, whether, you know, the buildable upland circle can't touch any wetland at all. So, I mean, there's no... You can't... Even if I hugged that property line, I have that sliver of wetland that's still inside that. And these were flagged by a wetland scientist. So the GIS map, if you look at a GIS map, that wetland area actually is probably about more than half... It's less than half of what you see here. So originally, when we looked at it, we looked at the GIS map. We did the iteration. But that wetland's out front there. When we actually flagged it, it's 200 feet closer to the road than a GIS map is actually showing it. So again, so they have two water betterments back when they put the water line in, in Farmers Lane, in anticipation of the two lots. So the owner would like to get two lots. The upland... The circle is just to show basically that you can put the property line in there without having these long, narrow, 10 foot, 20 foot sticks to a flag, if you will, out back, like a subdivision that went in. That's why the circle came up back then. And then they put buildable upland area. And then when you read the definition of buildable upland area, it can't touch wetlands at all. So it's a little, you know, I guess, if you will, yeah.
It looks like the buildable area on the larger lot is about 4,000 or so square feet, right? And then you're about 9,000 square feet on lot one for buildable footprint... Buildable area.
On lot one?
Lot one seems to... When you factor in the frontage and the set... The front setback, the side setbacks, and the 30 foot no touch zone, you're left with about 9,000 square feet of buildable footprint, I think.
No, you actually have 82,000 square feet, 71,000 of upland. If you pull 60 feet off the edge of... From the front, Farmers Lane, I believe that width of that lot's about, if that's 100, I believe we left it about 110 or so. But the wetlands, actually on lot one, you don't even need to file conservation. You can do all the work on lot one without... Outside 100 foot from a wetland resource area. So lot one will have no... Will not even go in front of the way on Conservation Commission.
I was saying that you have enough area.
Oh, yes. I thought you were saying only 9,000 square feet.
Challenging you, no, no.
Yeah. Oh, it has plenty of area for the buildable lot. And lot two as well. I mean, in order to do this plan, we laid out a house, as I said, 26 by 40, outside the 30 foot. So we laid out... We don't want to create lots that we're going to run into an issue with another board.
Charlie, do you have any input?
Just a couple of things I noticed. Lot... 18?
That's the bigger of the two. When you look at the upland that's on that, it's 40... 49,000 square feet plus?
Yes.
All right. Your wetlands line, John, that's been flagged by Sebasha. But has the wetlands line been approved by Concom?
It has not.
Okay. The way the plan is right now, it seems to me that it conforms to the requirements for approval not required plan. However, if there is an adjustment in the wetlands line on the larger of the two lots, which put the buildable upland less than 48,000 square feet, then it would not be in compliance with zoning. But that's beyond, I think, beyond the purview of this board. It would have to come up to conservation. And I would think that, John, being the engineer that he is, that he would have that line certified by the Conservation Commission before we actually set out to do any building. But that's the only issue that I had with it. Other than that, it seems to comply with your regulations.
But we can't put a condition on endorsement, can we?
No. And I don't see this as any condition that would be necessary at this point. If it turns out that the wetlands line gets adjusted to the point where the buildable upland on 1018 is less than 48,000 square feet, he's got a non-buildable lot, according to the zoning, which means that he'd either have to come back and adjust the wetlands or adjust the line somehow to pick up that added area out of lot one. You've got, I think it said, it was well over the 48,000, I think, on that one.
It's 49,330.
Right. What is it on the other lot, Richard?
71.
Right. So if he had to pull a little bit of out of lot one to make up for it in the event that there's a change, it appears that he has room to do that without affecting the frontage. And since it fronts on a townway, I believe it's in compliance and you could sign it
Question to this board is to grant the waiver on 615?
I don't think we could... We have to identify it as a waiver and say... By the regulations, it's a waiver from the planning board. There's always disruption, that's why I... That's why I wonder how it changed. So... Yeah. If it's listed as a waiver, then we'll hold it. So you have to make that motion first.
We haven't even voted yet. Look at them.
I thought you had voted. Question appointed.
Don't hold anything.
So I would be looking for the vote to waive the lot shape factor requirement that
So that's what it is, replacing it, is to prove the fact that it doesn't have all upland each of the building?
Correct.
Have you done it? Go.
Was that a motion?
It was.
Second?
Motion made by Mike King and seconded by Emmanuel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? So moved. And now, motion...
To endorse.
Motion to endorse made by Mike Baptiste.
Second.
Seconded by Mike King. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Yeah, okay.
It just has to do with the planting of the trees along the streets and so on. Get modification of the approval.
Lot 1007 and 1005.
All good.
I'm going to go with a hold of public hearing on August 12, 2019, 7:00 PM, in Route 320, Wayham Open Service Center, 48 Marion Road, to consider petition twenty-two dash nineteen for definitive subdivision plan requirements of national law, Chapter forty-one, eighty-one T, and the Wayham subdivision rules and regulations. The Coastal Cultivars, 339, both six floors, Boston, Mass, seeking approval of a one-lot subdivision, assesses map eighty-nine, Lot 1007, 1005, and the rest goes on and on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Brian Grady with GAF Engineering.
Dan Smith with Coastal Cultivars.
Jarrett Glennon, Coastal Cultivars.
We've made an application tonight for a Form C definitive subdivision to construct the cul-de-sac at the end of Patterson's Brook Road. I believe this has been a long time coming, and it might actually occur this time. We were before you, GAF Engineering, several years ago. McCarthy Properties had a proposal on this lot, which was withdrawn. Coastal Cultivars has the property under agreement, so this is the first step in them moving forward to develop that property with their proposed project. So all this is, is to construct a compliant subdivision at the end of Patterson Brook to provide the necessary access and frontage for future development. Get a little paperwork out of the way, I have W-9 here, I can submit, I know the applicant has provided a check to you for the review engineer, I don't know if he's been retained yet officially, or, but here's the, the W-9. I know we emailed it to you, but this is the origin. So, as I said, it's a construct, a compliant subdivision, we're extending the road, approximately one hundred and thirty feet of pavement, it's simply just the cul-de-sac. We are proposing two catch basins with cascade water treatment structures, which will go to infiltration retention basins, there aren't no wetlands within hundreds of feet of this, so we're proposing straight infiltration, and those areas will accommodate the hundred year storm event. And that's a very brief summary of the project, and if we can respond to any questions, or wait for Mr. Rowley's review in the future.
Is this the same proposal as previous change in the road configuration for the development?
Previous?
The last development of the, I think it was two renditions ago, was...
For McCarthy?
Yes, for the... And then they came back and made the longer one, now you're pulling it back again.
Yeah, we're pulling, I think there was enough frontage on that one for three lots here, we've got enough frontage for two lots. They, the current plan is only for them to develop the property right now, but we have left enough room for a potential future lot if they deem that necessary, or they don't find the need to use that land, so we shortened up the roadway a little bit, and reduces the pavement, and it reduces the incursion into the lot as far as affecting future developments. It's the proposed, it will be a marijuana grow manufacturing dispens, not a dispensary, processing facility. So we are, or will be shortly in, working on a site plan, but it'll be, you know, a couple of months before we're back before you with those details. Right now, we're just looking or seeking approval for the roadway as step one, moving forward to get a developable lot.
Got licenses, are you gonna approve?
It's not a dispensary, but they do have their approvals through Selectman's Office and, and what, what else they require, this in allowed use in the industrial zone.
But, but Ken, that doesn't consume one of the three licenses?
No, because the restriction on three was only for the retail dispensaries.
And growing, and sources?
Growing and processing. So your catch basins will overflow into the, into your basins, is that what I'm...
Yeah, the catch basins will go to either side, each catch, catch basin will go to the retention basins, yes.
No. I think the regulations only call for a fifty-foot radius circle paved area.
Yeah, for an industrial, I wouldn't. Industrial cul-de-sac, I don't think that'd be, I, I'd prefer not to show one.
Yes, I agree, this is why we don't want it quite shown and blaked.
Right, right.
Questions for the board?
So the, the outline of the cul-de-sac gives sufficient frontage?
Yeah. And it's required for the dead-end road statue. Can I ask a question, how far back will repaving of the existing road be completed?
I don't think we're showing any repaving, we're just extending it, remove the berm. You know, we will fix what we need to fix for underground utilities, trenches, but we weren't proposing to go back a certain distance.
Beating a demo of the existing cul-de-sac and stream it out?
No, build our cul-de-sac.
No, no, obviously, variants is right.
You're here just for this, I think. You're here just for that.
See, as I said, this cul-de-sac's not standing right now, so then you're only gonna go right to the property, and that's all you intend to fix, what you wanna fix.
Yeah, we will tie into the pavement at some point, and then have new pavement and construct the cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac there, yeah. So the number one, cul-de-sac, you didn't have two bulbs there, cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac. I would like to see that road fixed, that cul-de-sac removed, and have it as a straight, straight line into your cul-de-sac, versus cul-de-sac next to a cul-de-sac, you know, that's haphazard, you guys are gonna make billions of dollars there, you'll come rape the town, and we're gonna be stuck with this thing that looks like a piece of garbage, that's what it's gonna look like. You know, I, I think that's minimal, minimal. How many buildings you plan on putting in there? I'm sure that's not the time to ask, but...
Yeah, those details haven't been worked out, right now just one, but those final details haven't been worked out.
Well, I, I think we should play hardball right from the beginning. I think that road should be fixed all the way back, George, blend it in, remove the old cul-de-sac, and continue, blend it in.
Part of the problem is the, the condition of Patterson's Brook Road is not premium, so to speak.
So adding, adding one, that's where the traffic on that road is only gonna exasperate that condition.
Don't expect the idea of heavy vehicles traveling in this, for this particular use, but it is an industrial...
Why wouldn't it?
It is an industrial land, so we don't know exactly what use they'll be made of the property in the future, except by zoning.
But you're gonna, you're gonna have industrial traffickers, whether they're growing marijuana or they're making party hats, you're gonna have trucks running up and down that road that you don't have now, or more trucks.
You know, we've been talking six, eight months about design standards, you know, images and stuff like that. There was something on the news today, I heard somebody make reference to Wendy's, you know, Wayham doesn't have a high rating of, for the public, and like I said, I, I think that's a pretty shoddy deal.
Wendy's doesn't have a high rating with me anymore either.
Why was it you? I didn't hear the incident, so I, I just saw a news crew there, so... I think the, the, the problem is how far back these, this development should be responsible for the, the road improvements, the road reconstruction.
Well, whose...
It makes sense if the cul-de-sac be redone.
Yeah, well, whose property does the cul-de-sac create frontage on right now? Is it McCarthy's?
No, it's, it is on one side, and I'm not sure who...
New England Basket, is that?
No, that's...
Isn't that the...
It used to be the Muscle place, and it's Jim's Coffee, but I don't know who owns the building. Used to be, we met...
What's the purpose of this?
That's it, you've got some pretty wide driveways out there, I don't know how much is traffic.
Does it create, does it create, does it create permission problems where now, you know, technically, you've owned someone else's property, they're taking that bubble up?
Who does that, who does that road belong to? Does that belong to the town, EDAC?
It's a town road, yes.
It belongs to the town. So, so this one, yeah?
Yeah, it's a fifty-foot town road layout, but the, the bulbs of the cul-de-sac are on easements. So they are on private property, so we can have those discussions. I would look for Charlie's advice.
Would you say that again? I'm sorry.
Okay, where your temporary easement, turnaround easement?
You have the straight road, which is a layout, so the town owns the layout, and the town owns the road. The round portion of the cul-de-sac are on temporary easements, so they're on private property, so we would need to negotiate with the property owners about removing pavement and, and fixing that, so that's, that's a bit of a hurdle, but we can look at that, and I can speak with Charlie about how to approach doing that, maybe.
Would that be a monumental task, Charlie?
I don't think so, because I think in Chapter forty-one, there's a provision, and I can't speak chapter and verse right now, but whenever a road is extended and there's an existing cul-de-sac, essentially that previous cul-de-sac disappears, and it just becomes the two layout lines. So I don't know that that's a significant hurdle to overcome. The only thing I'd suggest would be, I think it was mentioned, we don't know where the driveways are that go into these various lots, whether it takes some of that pavement that's a part of the circle, so maybe it should be just mapped out to see what should be left and what could be eliminated and put back into Loeman's Seed. But again, that's, that's not a big deal to come up with that information.
I don't think that would be a lot to ask, to be honest.
Yeah, we, we have those located, I believe we're showing on, they are shown on Sheet Two, in that Plan View Detail, we do show the driveways.
Show one driveway, the one that goes to the O-5, or...
I'm sorry?
I said it shows one existing driveway on it, on Sheet Two.
On the, yeah, on the south side is the driveway, it's in McCarthy's property, and on the north side is that Building 21 that has the multiple occupants.
It's not, it's not well defined on that side.
Right, a lot of that parking is very close to the street.
They do have an island further up, yeah, it shows us the landscape area, but then it kind of gets lost.
Well, by having, by having the bulb of the original cul-de-sac removed, that's, that's only gonna improve their parking situation, I would think that they would be happy to have that discussion.
I don't know if they would be happy to move that, I think they kind of occupy that with parking vehicles right now. The south side, I don't think it matters as much, because that's just a driveway. On, well, on the up side, the north side, they, I've seen vehicles parked in that area.
But if you, if you took the bulb out and extended the landscape area to the new cul-de-sac, now they have a definitive parking area, not a parking area and then kind of a piece of a cul-de-sac that they have to put stuff in.
Yeah, it's something we need to explore, obviously, so we will do that.
I agree with Mike, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a big request.
So, is this in need of peer review, or is that already set up, or have you already... I think it's appropriate, given the, this is a subdivision road with engineering that's been...
Charlie, did you have any other comments?
Just, just a question for Brian. When I looked at the drainage, you're showing proprietary catch basins then going directly into those drainage areas. Why wouldn't it be perhaps a little more economical to put in two standard catch basins with a deep sump and an oil gas separator, and then designate the first portion of the drainage areas as a sediment basin? Don't you get the same sediment removal and eighty percent sediment removal calculation out of doing that? Don't you get the same sediment removal and 80% sediment removal calculation out of doing that? I think you would.
We can check on that, Bob did all this calc, I don't know why he chose the cascade.
Yeah, my concern with that is that it shows that there's a two-foot sump underneath all of that contraption that's supposed to trap the sediment. But in order to get rid of that sediment, you've got to pull out the whole units of that structure to do it.
I don't think so, I think just the VAC truck, I think they've finally designed this so that you don't have to do that and it's accessible with just the VAC truck, but I can check on that.
I would think it would be, you know, from a standpoint of the construction cost, I think it would be cheaper to just put in two standard structures that has a four-foot sump. You put in the T or the elbow at the end of the pipe for oil/gas separation, which you don't have right now. And then pick up your sediment control as the first point of discharge into your basin and let that overflow. I think you'd get the 80% removal that way. And it's just a little more efficient way of being able to get into those basins and pull out the sediment when you need to. Just a suggestion.
Yep, I can check on that, sure.
There may not be an awful lot less to review, but I think it would be appropriate just to do a little bit of inspection. I'd like to see the road myself, it's been a while since I was in there, to see what condition it's in. It might give you a little bit better idea as to what things might have to be improved along the way, if anything. Now that I can give you a standard report on the plan as a whole.
Charlie, the right-hand side, you may be able to take care of some striping or something.
There's no sidewalks or nothing down there, right?
No, there's no sidewalks in any of that. I think the access to that piece that's on the north side, isn't that off of Little Brook Road? I don't recall.
There is access from Little Brook. The site? No, you can only come over here.
Yeah, there's a driveway that goes all the way around it.
Yeah, but it doesn't go over to Little Brook.
No.
I think you'd have to cross a couple of brooks to get there.
I realize the purpose of our review is for the cul-de-sac, but please, what is the ultimate purpose for the use of the lot?
Development will be coastal cultivars, which will be marijuana processing and grow facility.
No retail?
No dispensing, those are all gone. Plus there's more.
Is that a greenhouse type of structure or is that a industrial structure?
It's an industrial hybrid structure. So a hybridized metal building, some greenhouse pieces to it. We're going to base on, we haven't got to finalize the original size, but we're looking 20,000 plus.
So to Mike's point, what is the vehicle traffic you would expect going into that facility? Pick-up trucks, box trucks?
Box trucks, mostly for deliveries. There would be occasional, maybe soil deliveries that might come in an 18-wheeler, but any of our products will go out in box trucks, not big trucks.
Employee traffic and typical commuter vehicles.
Yeah, the facility's 20-plus employees.
Anyone familiar with Lot 1006 on the left here?
Was this, was that part of this property at one point?
I'm not aware of that, I don't know.
Your Lot A is 1005 and 1007, two existing lots that we're talking about, right?
Yeah, there was an A and R plan that this board endorsed a little while back, correct?
106, you know? It's a landlot, a lot that's already created?
Yeah, it's in...
And it's not part of the Bliss Foundation. I can't hear either of you, gentlemen.
I think that is accessed from Little Brook, is it called? Little Brook, the road, the access.
Because if you come with the Bliss Foundation property is that light line, that butts the mall, right?
Which line?
No.
Which line down here? Or Walmart is.
I think the bliss goes out to Toby, right?
Yeah.
I didn't think there was any more access from Toby Road into that property. Because when, if you keep on going through that property to the left, you run into the mall, well, Walmart, right?
Not before you cross Little Brook, though.
Yeah, the only access to...
Stroesfalle, I'm sorry, Stroesfalle Brook.
Okay. Only access to our lot is off of Patterson.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a strip that's left over from what used to be the entire Bliss property that's in back of Walmart and is in back...
Right beyond the retaining wall, yes.
Right, and is up against SAV.
Okay.
But Stroesfalle Brook separates the Walmart piece from this piece that's labeled Bliss Family Foundation.
Is this a landlot? So is this something that could be done by next meeting? Review and feedback?
I'll do my usual estimate, so as soon as we get that squared away, I can do the review, but assuming that comes in in a timely fashion, yes.
$50,000 to end.
Oh, all right. It will be done for next meeting.
He answers that.
It's temporary anyway.
I thought it was zucchini cultivation you were talking about. Motion to...
Public hearing, Judge?
Before we do, I want to be clear, we didn't, we don't see any issues here other than we want to go out and get our eyeballs on it before we make a vote?
Well, Charlie is going to review the engineering details, which this is basically all engineering we're dealing with.
Okay. And Charlie's going to work with them, about removing that cul-de-sac, straightening that road out.
Now, I could take a couple of pictures of it so he can see what it looks like and see what would have to be done. I would leave it up to the applicant and his engineer to come up with a proposal. But I don't see any real big issues with it, it's pretty much standard procedure when you extend the cul-de-sac that way.
Yeah, I think we're just trying to give them some direction so we don't beat ourselves in the head 10 times and come back to see that cul-de-sac still there.
We certainly can work together, only a phone call away or drop him to his office, no problem.
Yeah, or if you drive by the site, I'd be happy to meet you out there.
Okay.
So the next meeting is...
14/26?
Continue to the 26th.
Continue, that's my motion. You get that?
Motion made by Mike Baptiste to continue to August 26, 7:00 PM, seconded by Mike King. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? So, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
We have no continued public hearing, no... This is just keeping this in our memory, that's no further than the covenant release?
Uh, no, there's still a discussion that's going to take place.
Okay. The discussion does have to take place?
Not hit before this board yet.
Okay.
That's what it is.
Um, presentation of the Economic Development Strategy.
Turn the lights down.
You're setting moving.
Mr. Wayne being chilled? Adios.
Adios.
Adios, and Wayne?
Yeah, our corner is empty to the great big pocket.
Well, that's not the Butler at the door.
Can you hear me okay?
I think that'll work, Jim.
Now you've done it.
Come on.
Work an hour ago.
Oh, myself, there it is.
It did. Here we go. Are the lights okay for you?
No.
That better?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we had a public workshop in June that the WRA hosted and we presented this Economic Development Strategy. We had two of those. I presented this to the Finance Committee. I've created a very short version of it that I want to show tonight to this team and I'll be doing the same for the ZBA as well. So what we're going to go through is a little background on why we did this and an executive summary. And then the meat of it is a section on Wareham demographics, a section on Wareham market conditions and trends, identified opportunities that were found, and then a conclusion. Now, Ken hasn't seen it, has seen this and worked on this with me, but I've changed it just a little bit to shorten it up, so bear with me. This was prepared by FXM Associates at the request of the WRA. The WRA sponsored two focus groups with FXM Town Officials, Business and Community Leaders, where we got feedback. And as I mentioned, this includes data analysis and a four-part strategy recommendation. Now, the full report's available on the town website, I have hard copies for everybody and I neglected to bring them tonight, I'll bring them next meeting. But the best way to look at it is on the website, because it's in color. So, executive summary is that we're behind county and state averages in wages, income, workforce, education, and housing values. We do exceed county and state averages in growth of population, growth of household, and growth of jobs. So in terms of economics, we're behind, in terms of growing our population and people, we are growing. Indicators are slowly improving and there are many opportunities, but there are things holding us back. And specifically, we are held back by lack of industrial space, lack of mid-to-high-end rental housing, lack of commercial flex space, lack of commercial residential mixed-use space, lack of mid- and high-wage employment opportunities in derelict and eyesore properties. And we'll talk a little bit about each of these. First, I want to go into demographics, this is interesting data. This isn't an opinion or subjective, this is data to back up some of the things you've already seen. Our population is growing a little faster than the county and state, we're growing at 6% versus 4 and 5 for county and state. We're expecting significant growth in household ages 55 to 74 of all incomes and a loss of households age 45 to 54 specifically in incomes under $108,000 a year. And this is the graph, this is where we're losing people. You can see the blue is 72,000, 84,000, 96,000, and 108 for the different colors here. We are expecting a decline in population. Still an incline in under 44, a large incline in ages 55 to 74. This is very interesting and I think it tells a lot about our community. One thing I will say, if you, right here, this is prime time for wage earners and we're losing people.
What's the story of the older demographics, is it becoming a retirement community?
Our, this, what does this tell us? That tells me people are coming here to retire, that's my personal opinion. So owner-occupied housing values are lower than the county and state median, we're a third. We are a third of the county, we are a third of the state, that's significant. Our wages are increasing a little bit at a higher rate than the county. But here's some interesting data, we have twice as many houses in Wareham that are less than 100 grand than the county, or 10% of ours are less than 100 grand versus five in the county. And we have half as many houses that are valued at over $400,000. And the owner occupied is higher than county and state. That talks to rental property availability and we'll talk more about that. There's some data here about owner occupied, where we're at versus Plymouth County in Massachusetts and median value of the house Wareham, Plymouth County, and Massachusetts. Wages were significantly lower than the county and very significantly lower than the state, 20% and 40% less. We have, mainly because we have a very high percentage of low-paying jobs in the retail, accommodation, and food service area. We generally lag county and state averages in all industries. And here you can see that, the blue is Wareham, the orange is Plymouth County, the green is Massachusetts. This is like in construction, we're behind, in professional tech services, we're way behind. In finance and insurance, we're very, very far behind. In administrative, we're above average. But in the key ones where people are earning their money, we are behind. Manufacturing is a big one, where we should be leading the way here. Household income is lower than Plymouth County. The good news there is the problem's getting less. In 2006, we were at 3/4 and in 2017, we're at 83%. Lower levels of post-secondary education in our workforce is also impacting household income. So here you can see average and median numbers for Wareham in blue and Plymouth County in orange. I'm sorry, 2006 and 2007 is blue and orange. This is Wareham, this is Plymouth County for average, and here it is for median in Plymouth County. The job growth is higher, we're at 24% versus 14 and 15 for county and state. Healthcare, retail, trade, hotel, food services lead, I've mentioned that before, the good news is healthcare, I'll show you that in a minute. The retail trade and hotel food drag those wages down, however. Our biggest one is healthcare, goes back to our aging population, that is, number of jobs that we have, retail, trade, lodging, and food are two and three behind that, manufacturing is fourth. So the EDS then looked at market conditions and said where our opportunities are. Office space, there's, demand is increasing, we are slow to develop any premium space. And there are opportunities for shared office space with more and more telecommuting and working at home in the job market and we don't have any space for it. Industrial space, our space is not growing, the demand is rising, vacancies are decreasing. But the bad news is a developer can't go in and buy property and build manufacturing facilities and charge enough money to make it a wise business investment for him. It just doesn't work. This is where we have to start talking about how does the town partner with developers to bring new industrial space to the town. Flex space is a new term, it's smaller manufacturing spaces, wholesale distribution space, laboratory, office space, space where you can do a lot of smaller type of operations, we don't have any, then the demand is growing. Retail space, this is an interesting one. The demand is steady and there's opportunities for us to sell product in this town that you can't buy there today, that's leakage. We have relatively low vacancy rates of, and this is important, viable and available retail space. We have a lot of empty buildings right now that you may want to think are retail, but they're not viable and they're not available and they're not being marketed right now. they're not available and they're not being marketed right now. The big box stores are generally full. And as I was saying, uh, the, many of the small individual buildings that we see aren't being actively marketed 'cause they're not physically, um, capable of being rented as-is. They need development work. Rental housing, this is important. And as we saw in that one graph about our population trending, the under 35 and the 55 to second, 75 market is growing and rental housing is becoming a much more attractive option to people in the retirement market. Our Wareham vacancy rates are declining and our rents are increasing. That's, um, that tells you that there's demand out there and we can't satisfy it. There's a significant gap in mid-to-high-end market-based rental housing. Um, Rosebrook is a very good example. They're doing very well right now. Um, they're, I would consider them high-end in Wareham. Demand analysis that EDI, in the EDI that FXM did, um, supports this. And the mid-to-high end is that's where a developer wants to go. Developers want to do mid-to-high-end, uh, properties. They don't want to do low-end properties. Now, EDS identified opportunities for us to consider in four specific areas. In Wareham Village, in Onset Village, in industrial space area and the Route 6 and 28 commercial businesses. What you're gonna see here is recommendations that were made by FXM. And these are, uh, recommendations that the redevelopment authority is looking at. In many cases, we're in alignment, some we're not. A Wareham Village urban renewal plan for the elimination of derelict buildings, the cleanup of buildings and lots, and a creation of a Wareham Village destination, possibly in conjunction, conjunction with Tremont Nail. Rezoning in that, in that village. Higher density and height allowances, mixed use for residential, retail, office and other, and prioritized parking solutions. Um, the, the zoning in Wareham Village is restrictive right now. It's not matching with the current market is looking for. And it's something that, that I believe that this planning board needs to look at and maybe drive. And again, as I mentioned before, there is a case to be made here to evaluate private investment incentives where the town can partner with developers. The opportunities that were identified regarding industrial space were to update the existing parks, extending the utilities and sewer, and promote Kendrick Road as a tourist-oriented food cluster based on the fact that Kendrick Road has a lot of food businesses up there. And this is an important one. Promote Wareham as a logistical superstar of locations, if you will, being on the right side of the bridges. We have 195 Route 6, 495 25 Route 3. We can get anywhere and anywhere, um, in southeastern Massachusetts. We are a very, very good spot for, for shipping and freight and logistics. Route 6, we, uh, the recommendation was is that we market it better. And it's gonna be a lot easier to do with the rebuild that's going on. The infrastructure improvements with median planning and lighting which is going on. And again, zoning comes back on, in the recommendation to implement higher density, mixed use in select locations. Places where we could have commercial, retail and, um, residential in, on one building lot. The Onset Village urban renewal plan recommendations focused on beautification, town pier, and increased parking options. And again, rezoning for mixed use, higher density, uh, commercial. And again, derelict building acquisition. Sell as-is for affordable housing or restoration of public resale. And again, looking at private investment incentives or partnerships between the town and developers. Now, Ken, this is a conclusion I wrote to wrap this up. So I want everyone to understand. These are my words if no one, and Ken hasn't seen them, the WRA hasn't seen them. But I wanted to wrap this up 'cause we had a longer conclusion before. But my conclusions are that the Wareham population is growing, but the current housing and jobs are performing well below county and state averages. So, those two, those are facts. And that means people are coming here and they're living in below-average houses and they're taking below-average jobs. The market demand analysis highlights that, highlights attractive demands that Wareham can't satisfy. There's flex space, there's rental housing, mid-to-high end. We can't satisfy that demand. And positive change won't happen on its own. So it's my opinion in that we as government, we as planning board, we as WRA must proactively start executing programs against those opportunities. And that's something that the WRA is talking about at every one of our meetings. What's out there? Where is there opportunity? Where, how can we improve the quality of life for Wareham citizens? And if we just sit back and wait for it to happen, I don't believe it is gonna happen. So, I think that we need to be proactive here. So, that's all I have. Comments or questions? I went, I went quickly. I know it's late and I did that on purpose, so.
Richard, on the acquisition of derelict buildings, how would that happen?
Well, I know two ways it can happen. We can offer to buy them, or three ways.
Sorry?
I'm sorry. That's my bad. Um... Uh, and Ken, you can help me. I know three ways. We can buy the property. We can take it for lack of tax payment, or we can take it by eminent domain. Those are the three ways I know that we could acquire property.
That's right.
What's the cost to acquire a piece of property outside of the actual purchase? Insurance?
And all depends what we want to use it for. I mean, I think we, we use, if, if acquisition of properties is a key, making things work, then we'll spend the time trying to figure it out and whether or not we partner with developers as, as Richard was saying, as a way to get private equity involved in the acquisition of property, then all the better. Because then it can be more directly, because what we want to do is, no matter, what we're trying to do in, in, in acquisition of property is, is, is to get private investment in the, in the, in the area that is being targeted.
I don't think the town needs to become a, a real estate broker. We, we need to go find a developer that's willing to front the money and carry the cost and the burden. And we'll assist them using a political mechanism to manage that process. We, we've got empty buildings that the town already owns right now that we don't have a purpose for. So, I, I do want to ask, was this presented to the selectmen?
Not as a group. I know, I know, I can, I know four or five have seen it. And the fifth, I, I can't say if, if that person has or hasn't. I'm not sure. But I know four have. I know, I know one of them's seen it, uh, at least three times now.
So, first of all, I, I want to compliment you. That is precise, accurate and it's real data from what I can see and you're telling us right now. It tells an interesting story to me, just to Mark, is that you've targeted where the problem areas are. And for two and a half years I've sat on this board, and I don't recall a single business that came in front of us that was going to help escalate the income in this town, create jobs in this town, work on the appearance of our commercial buildings on this town. And tonight is a classic example of why this is not going to work. Somebody has already had a discussion about a, a manufacturing of marijuana cultivation on precious, precious, precious industrial property, which could house a number of different businesses that will produce more than 20 jobs, right out of his mouth here tonight, that will produce more than $15 an hour, $20 an hour jobs. So until the selectmen and, and the decision-makers as a whole across the town absorb this information, this board can't do anything because everything's being forced back to us right now. We're talking about a planning decision that should have been discussed with us before the decision of licensing took place. And now we're left to talking about a cul-de-sac and curbing.
The, uh, we had the same discussion with the moving of Walmart, the using of industrial land for retail space and the, the loss that was there. So, there's, that's not a new discussion. Uh, the, uh, I don't know, given the, I don't know that industry and what their wages are. It may be better wage jobs. It's probably better than the minimum wage you'd see at some of the retail outlets.
But even so, it's producing 20 jobs. My purpose in asking this gentleman tonight...
That's 20 jobs more than, than it was a solar field.
Yeah, but I guarantee you it's, it's not paying any more than a, a shift supervisor at Walmart. It, it can't. Not, not for the volume that they want to produce. I'd ask them to come back to the data, but that, my point was not that, is that if you want us to act like a planning board and act in the best interest of the town and make 20,000-foot decisions on how property gets used in here, we can't be part of the secondary decision on this. So, yet, again, two and a half years, the only time I see a selectman sitting in this room is to defend an issue in a decision that's already been half-made already. And we have to, we have to change the way that we think as a town. Zoning has to meet with this planning board. The selectmen have to meet with both of those boards and it's just not working this way. We, we keep going through a Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday meeting. I'm just venting here because I, I, this can't be corrected unless we change the behavior of how we communicate as a town. Everything is coming to every board as secondary information after every other consideration. So, on a quarterly basis, I feel that every board that sits in this town needs to, to sit in one room together away from, it can be publicly viewed so that, so that everything's vetted, but the decision-makers in the town have to have the ability to talk to each other and it never happens. And I'd be glad to vote, I'd be glad to donate the time if I thought it was gonna be effective. But if I think it's just gonna be a good old boy system again, with everybody on their separate agenda, will you present it to us as a roadmap in how we can become a top-notch community in the state of Massachusetts? So, if, if I had my wish, make all the tax money you want off of these new economy that's can't come into this house or, into this town, take that money and, and give it a dedicated purpose right now. I still don't know why, again, I'll come back to the marijuana thing, what's happening with the tax money? So we produced 20 jobs and we've produced a, a new cul-de-sac and how much, how much dollars is it gonna produce and what are we gonna do with those dollars? Is it paying for our new school? Is it paying for the purpose of delinquent properties? This is the piece that we're not talking about. I'm, I'm, you're, you're doing yeoman's work here.
No, no.
And Ken's doing yeoman's work. And, and, you know, each individual board is, is doing their part. But we, we be, to, to us as a planning board, it just seems that we're, we're, we're in the, we're in the, you know, the 11th hour of decision-making on everything that's happening here.
So, can I, I will just say that, um, I agree at a high level with what you're saying in that we are, I, I'm, I worry that we're a reactionary board and not a planning board. We react to, to, to changes people want to go, come and tell us. And, um, some people think our job's to say no. And I think our job's to say yes, and we need to tell people where that yes needs to go. It's up to us to set that direction. And should the planning board be working very closely with the redevelopment authority? Absolutely they should. Should they be working with the board of selectmen? Absolutely they should. And, um, I know people on this board, uh, Mark, are, are talking about some ways that we can do that. And that's gonna come up soon enough.
Right. So, what are some of those options? I mean, one of the options that I, I would see is that you have public hearings once a month and the second meeting of the month talks about 20,000-foot level planning, you know? And, and people are just gonna have to prioritize around that one meeting a month. Um, but there's, there's, listen, my time's as valuable as anybody else is sitting here. This is precious time to us. This is time that, that we have chose consciously to take away from our families and our businesses to be here. And, and I want to be doing the smartest work I can while I'm here. But I, I can't, I, I, all of a sudden, I keep, it's like Groundhog Day. I'm coming and talking about solar panels or some form of a marijuana process without talking about the things that you're, that we need in here. You know, more densely populated residential areas. I know there's not enough housing for that demographic. That's craziness. If, if the story's telling us that 55 to 75-year-olds are moving to this community, they need affordable housing. We need a developer in here that's gonna build. I, I can't help to think every time I go by exit 3 or 4 up here on 495, that apartment complex. Did you guys have seen that right off the road there in Middleborough? Right? Or the apartment complex, go up federal, um, not, yeah, Federal Furnace, go to Plymouth. Federal Furnace?
Yeah.
Yeah, Federal Furnace to Plymouth up by the N-Star, right? You see those buildings they built up there? We can't find a piece of land to put 300 units in like that?
Well, they, they tried doing that with a developer in West Wareham. They didn't get any grabs. They said it wasn't feasible. Charlotte Furnace Road.
So, this is... That was a whole, that was, that was a sham.
If I, if I, I need, I need to say that you're, you're highlighting a point that is critical to my argument. And that is, uh, what I call the agencies, the boards, the authorities, the commissions, all the different government groups that have their meetings don't know what, don't know what we're doing. Don't know what each other's doing.
No.
The redevelopment authority is very active right now, working on, on Littleton Drive with mass housing and mass development, on trying to figure out a way we can get affordable senior housing into, into there. Well, and they're gonna help us, right now, they're, they think they can help us find a developer that can partner with us. It's great stuff.
Yeah. So why, so why are we sitting in the, the high school auditorium once a month instead of in here and listening to every board give a 15-minute presentation on what they're working on and comment on that?
Yeah, and have roundtable discussion on it.
Public affordable senior housing is a misnomer, especially in the demographic that you showed up here where, if I remember right, the median income to somebody in that age group was over $100,000. Right off the bat, they don't, they don't qualify for the type of housing. Littleton Drive.
Oh, there's, be very clear. There's a market for affordable and, and market in almost every demographic, um, in my, in the data that I've seen. All right?
But on the ground, anybody that would, there's not many people that meet the affordable senior housing. Because if they have no assets, they don't qualify. If they sell their assets, now they have too much money.
What's the one up ahead of, uh, I can't, I never, Chremes, not Chremes, how do you say it? Chremes Road, the, the, uh, over 55 housing complex on the left, right, right when you pull in? Right when you go start on Chremes?
That was, that was billed as partially assisted, right? That's partially assisted living and...
There's a six-year waiting list of people that qualify.
But it's mostly subsidized.
Yeah, affordable. HUD subsidized.
But I think what George is trying to point is, is that somebody that's got $100,000 a year income, they aren't about that.
Yeah, but they want to go to Rosebrook. Or they want to go to, uh, an upscale granite counter stainless steel kitchen, three-bedroom, two-bath, um, apartment on the fourth floor with a water view.
It's, it's...
There, there's, there's both ends. The demand is there.
But if you're looking to, for a demographic to raise the town up...
Want the higher end.
Exactly.
Exactly.
We should, we should be, we should be catering to the...
Baby boomers?
To, to the commuters. I mean, that's, that's, we've got two things going for us in this town. We've got the perfect location. You work in Boston, you work in Providence. That's the reason I moved to this town, was the location. And then we've got miles and miles and miles of coastline. So, let's, let's cater to the people that work in Boston or work in Providence that, that are making 150 grand a year, that can afford, uh, a better standard of living here than they can in Boston.
Well, I think you, you've seen, uh, you've seen the, uh, the shock, I guess is one way to put it, with Rosebrook. When people heard those rental numbers, oh, you'll never get that in Wareham, you'll never get that.
It's full.
All of a sudden...
But it's the location. That's what's selling those apartments.
But it's also going to entice other developers to come to do it without tax dollars and without subsidies and without public money. With their own money, they'll come in and build places like that.
As long as you make the land available.
Right. As I say, if we're chewing up the land for marijuana facilities, then, then what do you do? Now there's no way to build it.
As you saw... As you saw in the demographic, our property values are lower than any of the surrounding towns.
Yeah, but is that number being pulled down because of all the trailers?
No.
It isn't. That, 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 those, the value of those doesn't come into that.
Well, they-
That was asked the very first time we presented it, and the guy that put Frank Mahady from FXM was in, was there to, to help us, and he answered the question, no, they're not.
So, all that housing is not represented in that presentation at all?
So, Richard, what are you asking from us as a board?
Um, my, my goal tonight was to make you aware of the data. The data says we are on the low end of jobs, we're on the low end of housing, we're the low end of household income, and our population's growing. In that, and if people are coming here, they're, as I said, they're taking low, low-end jobs and living in low-end housing. We have an opportunity, if we can create higher jobs and better housing or higher market housing, to bring, uh, people here, um, to make more money and raise the level, raise the median of our town. If we don't do anything, it's just going to continue on the path that we've been on for quite, quite a while now.
Right. So, we know that the real estate value drives the, the real estate tax in, which drives our entire economy here in town. So, we have to elevate that up. So, so the questions we need to be asking is, what do you, what is your purpose for the property? What is the square footage you're building? What is this going to accomplish for our tax base? We have, we have to put a economic decision into the equation as people are presenting things to us. So, so now that we have a larger home, more real estate dollars, how do we populate that house? One way is through what Michael's saying, is that we get high earners from Boston, jobs, to live down here. The second way to do it is create the jobs here. If we don't create the jobs here by keep putting up steel space buildings everywhere that are only employing four or six people, and we need to make sure that those businesses are creating jobs and feeding into the economy, when, when, you know, the decision for business owners to be here is not just a decision of, of how many jobs are produced, or how much income is produced from those jobs, but how does those jobs impact the community around them? Where do they buy their sandwiches? Where do they grocery shop? Where do they do the retail shopping? Because it's, it's not going to benefit us if we bring good businesses in here, but people are working those jobs from outside of our community because it doesn't feed the other parts of it. So, so again, I'll say it's how we're communicating with each other. That's all I can say. It's, it's, you know, if you said we got to add a third meeting a month, and it has to be a structured agenda, and it has to be run by the committee chairs, and it has to only last two hours, and has to say, here's my update, because right now they're depending on every one of us to open up the Wareham Courier, or whatever source of information we're getting to, the Wareham website, um, it's, it's just, it's too scattered. It's, it's not, it's not consistent, and it's not productive time. I'm sorry.
Richard, what, what kind of high-paying jobs, um, has FXM or anybody looked into to see that would be attracted to come here?
I don't have any.
Isn't that part of the problem?
It is.
If they're all staying up around the Route 495 Beltway, or if they're coming into the Plymouth Industrial Park area, which has grown like crazy in the last 15 to 20 years, what is it, government in any level cannot create business? They never do. So, it's private money that's going to make or make, make or break that. So, what sort of jobs are attractive? What kind of businesses are beginning to develop now where it really doesn't matter where you locate, that you're not so demanding on, um, road traffic, rail traffic? A lot of the stuff that's being done today is on a phone the size of Mark's phone.
Technology is one.
Technology is what's driving it all. What sort of stuff is out there that, that would, could be available here that isn't available anyplace else because this is such an attractive place?
I think a lot of it has to do with, with the lifestyle and the living arrangements. You know, just FXM itself, as a company, they have people in California, Washington, around the country that are in real time, working on their projects. And so, people make a decision about where they want to live. If it's an attractive living environment, and you have the amenities and the sport, and it's not just the coastline, it's also that there's a great opportunity for, to buy a boat or something, that there's a lifestyle that, that is attractive to people, then they'll, they'll populate and make their decision about how they make their money.
To Ken's point, and to answer your question, there's, one theory says that the, the environment will drive the job level. And we have to drive the environment up, and the job will come with it. That's, that's a theory. And I kind of, I kind of understand that. You're not going to get, you're not going to get a high-tech company or a high-flyer investment bank to come and build an office park or an office building in Wareham and expect their people to come live here. That's not what they're going to do. The environment isn't right for that. So, I think the cart before the horse is you got to get, start raising the environment. And maybe the way you have to do that is with $15-an-hour, $20-an-hour, $20-an-hour, $25-an-hour jobs.
Well, let's, let's assume that the environment is inviting. Um, I traveled around a little bit, and Wareham is not the only town that is saying, we got issues. Because in other towns that I've gone to, one in particular, they're concerned about the fact that there's no housing there that's available for a starter home, for a young family to come in and to buy a piece of land or to, to build a small house, and then perhaps put an addition on a little bit later as the family grows. Um, that's hard to do.
It is.
And-
Especially with the demographics we have. People grow up here and they get to 25-years-old and they leave.
And they leave.
And then they come back when they're 55 or 60 to retire.
Right. Because the incentives are not here. They're elsewhere.
Right.
So, what is it that we're trying to accomplish, um, if that's the case? By increasing the environment or the increase of the, the green space or making it more attractive, is that going to keep them here if there's no job?
Why, I guess the question I would have is, if the largest population's growing's at 55 to 74, what is drawing them to this community?
Shoreline.
Right.
And cheap housing.
Not jobs.
No, it's cheap housing. Look, look at the beach areas.
Enough cheap housing.
Yeah, but it is. Look at, how many people have applied to the building department to upgrade the housing in Swiss Beach, in Parkwood Beach, in Onset, in other places? Because they've owned these small places for many, many years. Now they're of retirement age, or their families have moved on, and it's been well to them. Now they want to make a place in order to be able to live in comfortably with reduced responsibilities. So, they come to a place that's more economically feasible, and they upgrade the small house. It's, it's happened for a long time. It's been that way for a long time.
Well, if that's the demographic that's gravitating towards here, and the answer is housing and approval of upgrades of housing, then we should concentrate our energy on there. It doesn't matter if there's a Johnson or Johnson or a healthcare system in this town. These people are done working. They're beyond that age now. So, we'll concentrate on that demographic and that population, you know, but is that, is that a sustainable population? You'd rather have, you know, a long-term resident that gets here at 25-years-old and stays here till 65. And the way that you do that is you build a community that's appealing to them. It has good school systems, it has good jobs available. I can't, I can't help to think, I'm sorry, in, off of Route 44 in Taunton, if you go behind that super Walmart into that industrial park, this is what resonates in my mind, is why can't we come up with an industrial park that looks like that?
We don't have the space.
How long that sat there?
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
That whole corner sat there for probably 50 years, cleared, filled, and sat there. Because I think the original reason was compaction. They brought all that fill in there.
Well, it's a lot of wetlands in there.
Yeah.
But now it's Johnson Johnsons, it's FedEx, it's UPS, it's, it's tech company, it's an incubator of jobs because of the type of businesses.
Our industrial park is a great incubator. You know, we need more space if we could find it, you know?
So, Mark, I couldn't, I just want to say a couple things. I couldn't agree with you more on meeting of the minds of the boards. The word I've bandied about is a congress. That was suggested to me by one of, another town leader, where all, all of our boards should get together and make sure we're on the same page. And I'm a firm believer that the master plan is the bible that should hold us together. And we should have that in place, and we should be working all these agencies together to that plan, and amending that plan, and tuning that plan all the time, but we're always on the, on the same page. But, um, the one thing I do want to say that we didn't talk about is that since I've been involved with town government, every major, every major project that seems to come along requires, um, variances, or waivers, or zoning changes at town meeting. And I think that we have an obligation to get ahead of that. And we talked a lot on, on that presentation about mixed-use zoning in many areas of Wareham. And I would like to see us not wait till someone comes here, because someone might never come here to do something like that. I think we need to get ahead of it, and as a, as a town, say, this is where we want to see these kind of things. We get the zoning in place now, so a developer doesn't come in, have to come in and wonder if it's going to pass at a vote. He knows it's already passed. It's there. It's ready to go. This town wants to do these things. So, I get wound up sometimes.
Well, you know, one of the plans that you show is the, the boardwalk behind Main Street and the, to Tremont now. That plan was developed 10 years ago, at least.
I don't know what your point is there, George.
If that was in place now, we'd have a different look in Main Street, wouldn't we?
Yeah. So, that plan, it resurfaced, hasn't it? And I think, and there's a redevelopment authority that's actively working to see if we can do that.
The, the other impact, you talk about the costs of space, is your codes. Your building code, your FEMA code, your green energy code, all that raises cost per square foot.
Big time.
And most of it has no reasonable payback. It's just paying for somebody's agenda. It doesn't save the building, it doesn't make you any more hurricane-proof. A lot of the green energy stuff won't even pay back itself in the life of its equipment, you know? And it doesn't stop. It, you know, it used to be, you'd get a code, you'd get a building code, it'd be good for 10 years. It does, it's, changes weekly, I think, just because somebody has an idea. And all those ideas cost money. That raises, if you had to come out of the ground with a new building now, your rent would be probably higher than Wareham Crossings. And Main Street won't support that.
So, what would it take to, at least test the waters on, on the congress? To, so here's, here's what I observe, is that the, the room is just filled with board members, though. It's not, once you open it up to the public, it becomes a public debate, like a town meeting. So, you're, you're talking about just the board members in the room, right?
No, it has to be a public meeting.
Does it have to include public comment, though, or it could be just a gallery to witness what takes place?
It's like, it's like the selectman meeting. They have, they have a, they have a, an allocated agenda item for public input.
But I think that's, not, not that you would ever want to shield what the discussions are from the public, but I think by including public comment, all it does is, is just mires down the process. You don't get anything accomplished.
That's, that's why we have workshops, you know? We gave this, when we introduced this presentation, and it was twice as long, took almost an hour to go through it, it was a public workshop. We did it on a Thursday night and a Saturday morning. And the audience was the public. And we, we didn't do very well on attendance either. And we advertised as hard as we could.
Uh, one thing that you brought up is that zoning has changed. The way people look at things are not, even in the time period I've been here, you haven't seen so many crossing of a line for a zoning, you know, oh, this use isn't pigeonholed into this, so where do we go with that, you know?
Mr. Buckham?
Yeah, here I am. Just got the message.
Okay. Just contact your neighbor.
Yeah.
That's not good.
You know, things, uses that went on for years, now they're being identified as you need to various for that, and common sense stuff. And I don't know how we adapt our bylaws to, to put a little more common sense in them.
So, Mark, let's, um, let's, you and I talk and think about this congress idea, how, there's, there's a lot of, I've spent a lot of brain cells thinking about it. There's a lot of gotchas in trying to pull it off and getting people in power to speak and, and things like that. But think about it, you know? I think it's something good to do, but I'm not sure how to execute it where it would be, every, all the scenarios I come up with in my mind, they, I don't see them being successful. But the concept is good.
Yeah, I, I think what you, what the town needs to realize is that the entire system can't be built off of volunteers. There, there has to be some paid work forces out there getting this stuff done. And we need to find a way to do it without asking more of people's time. You know, to ask us for a third meeting or a fourth meeting a month would be, in my mind, unreasonable. And again, I know you guys are all as busy as I am, but if you took one meeting away each quarter and called it the congress meeting, I don't, I think that you could, you know, spend an extra 15 minutes at all the other meetings and get the same amount accomplished and free up one night in which you can be updated by the other board. So, I think it's just a, it's just a logistical calculation, and it changes.
That's a greater outcome. Once a quarter would be perfect.
I'm sorry?
I think once a quarter would be perfect.
I do, too.
Get everybody in the, in the same room and just make sure we're all sitting from the same page.
Well, you, you need one more step. You need the people that are first-facing somebody coming through the door. You need the building department, the, you need everybody to be on the same page. So, somebody comes in, doesn't talk to the wrong person at the desk, and walk over and say-
Couldn't agree more.
You know how many times that happens?
All the time. Happened to me last week.
I'd like to see the, I'd like to see the draft of the, uh, comprehensive master plan brought out to the point where it gets discussed, because if the goals and objectives in that plan aren't everybody's idea at this point, and it isn't put together to the extent that it can be adopted by town meeting as a document to hang your hat on, then what are we doing?
Well, the good news is, planning board owns this master plan.
Well, nobody's seen it. That's the problem, Richard. And we need to, I would like to see it, and I would think that not only the planning board might own it, but every other board in town owns it, too. And if they don't have the input into, say, health issues, or if they don't have the input into conservation issues and waterfront issues, or municipal maintenance issues and that kind of thing, if their input doesn't get into it, you know, we, the planning board, in my view, can't do all of the work. It's got to have input from those boards, and it, it might have to be broken down into pieces where the interests of one board are dealt with until you've sort of solved that, and then you jump to the next one. Get through all the various departments in town that have vested interest in it, because without their input and agreement, according to what, like what George has said, you're not going to get very far. But if, if the whole town as a whole can't, um, put their fingers on that document and say, yeah, this is, this is set of goals and, and standards we want to, we want to head toward, then we're simply spinning wheels, it seems to me.
I owe you an apology. I sent out a link to, to the master plan.
I've, I've seen it. I downloaded it. But it's, it's a problem reading it on a download because you can only read it one page at a time. And if you want to jump back, now you got to scroll from what you were doing. And so, if, if there are hard copies on that master plan, I think we all ought to have a copy of it.
So, I also summarized it down to three and a half pages.
But it's not, it hasn't been adopted, and it's not enforceable.
I could make the motion right now for this board to approve it, and if we voted three to two to approve it, it's done.
Not without town meeting vote.
That's not true.
I don't see how it can't be.
And it's still, it's not enforceable in the way you think. It's a guide.
It is a guide.
It's a roadmap.
Charlie, I've checked this out. I've checked it clearly.
It does not-
Eighty, eighty-one, eighty-one D spells it out. We own it, we approve it, we can change it. Majority vote.
But doesn't, but, but by doing that, doesn't it fly in the face of trying to get all the boards to work cohesively? When you say, all right, we own this, here it is.
As you and I talk, Mike, we've had a draft plan for how long? Two years?
But I think, you're talking about putting together a Congress of all the boards. Is it this a perfect jump-off point?
It is.
But, so why does it have to be adopted and put into place prior to that conversation? Why can't that be the conversation? Here's the plan, we haven't gotten it approved yet, this is where we're going to start, as a group, all the boards, yeah?
You can take that approach, and it'd be my prediction that you'll never get it approved, because you're always trying to make it perfect. My proposal would be, we have a master plan, and we have a way to tune it, and we tune it four times a year.
But don't you think that it would be, for the sake of cooperation, that that would be something that you would want the other boards to...
If you look at the sections of the master plan, they've got Conservation Committee, they've got Redevelopment Authority, Planning Board, Zoning Board, written all over those sections. I just gave it to Charlie. Charlie, do you have it? Can I have that back? The major sections are land use, economic development, services and facilities, stewardship and service, transportation and circulation, housing, open space, natural and cultural resources. We could divvy each of those sections to the different agencies in this town, and say, this is what the current master plan says our strategy is. Come back and tell us how you want it changed. Make a presentation, and this board, right here, will vote, and we'll change it. It's just a guide. But if we try to get it perfect...
I don't think anything's ever going to be perfect.
We'll never get there. Anyway.
I think what it can be is a guide to somebody looking to do something, yes, say, look, we encourage what you want to do, it's right here in the master plan. Because right now, if you, on several occasions, I've told people that were holding back, bring it forward, that's exactly what we were looking for, for that district or something. And they don't, because they don't have the confidence of getting through the system. They don't want to invest tens of thousands of dollars in site plan, and to be told no. It's like...
This is good discussion, and we beat it pretty hard, so...
But, like I said, zoning has changed. You get a lot of gray areas now coming in that a fixed zoning document don't really hit, which would send everybody to the Board of Appeals, or send them out of town.
But the market changes, too. The zoning documents are always trying to catch up.
Can I offer a suggestion that, I believe we underutilize technology here, is that, one is, a lot of what's thrown in front of us that slow up the decision-making and the clarity can be downloaded into a Google Docs or some other online resource that's better presented. But the other part of it is the idea part. If we can just create an outlet for a developer to say, I have an idea that I want to present to the Wareham Planning Board, have them post it on there, where we can all look at it independently, give it a yea or nay vote. If they got three out of five votes on the review, then we would invite them in to present their idea, so that they're coming in with a high confidence level that three out of the five people already, you know, like what they hear. And they basically get this commercial in advance, and it should help build up their belief in their own program, or confidence that they can at least have a chance of getting this thing through. Because I do agree with you that it's a shot in the dark, you know, okay, I got an idea for, you know, a multifamily subdivision. What are these guys going to do? You know, they're opposed to it, they're, they don't know until they put it in front of us, and they invest a lot of private money to get here.
There was a sign, online or something posted, that said, when you're in Boston, you're an hour away from Boston. And I think businesses and people trying to operate companies are finding that out, the time wasted. They're going to be looking for places like this, with easy access to highways and everything else. It's going to take a while. You know, when you go to a city with, say, a walking waterfront or something, they have a much bigger base population in a small area. We don't really have that, so we've got a ways to go before you... We have it, but it's very seasonal, let's put it that way. Boost it up to where you have enough customers to last you through the doldrums of February and March.
What's the chance of getting rail transportation to Wareham from Boston? Because the idea of, my wife suffers with going into Boston, she has to drive to Middleborough, it's still a huge trek to get into Boston. Whereas if there were, and I've heard that there's some discussion about it, what's the feasibility of this, and do you know any better?
I know, we missed, it went to Fall River.
If you saw the ridiculous proposal to get to Fall River, and said, for a tenth of the money, you could come to the canal, you'd wonder, what the hell are they thinking?
Is it precluded from pursuing?
Step one was, we were hoping Wareham would be step one, or part of the step one thing, and we're not. And they're going to do an extension into Fall River. We moved, and now we've got to go push for it to be part of step two, which is several years down the road.
If there were some way, I'm sorry, by the way, thank you for the information, Richard, and Mark, I agree with you 150%, everything you said, you were reading my mind, well, I agree, thank you. I also see what's missing is some identity to market the town. I'm thinking of an example that I'll relate to you, that I recently experienced. I don't think that that is exactly what needs to happen here, but something of that sort. I was recently in Bilbao, Spain. It was an ordinary, you know, nothing. Suddenly, private, and I believe some government, but primarily private funds, the Guggenheim Museum hired, oh God, I forget it, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank, but the building that went up for the Guggenheim Museum has become a world-renowned attraction. It has generated, I think, three billion dollars of income into Bilbao, and has put Bilbao on the map, simply because of one event. Not that we're looking to build a Guggenheim Museum in Wareham, but if there was some, and I don't have the answer, of course, but something to distinguish it from Carver, from Marion, from New Bedford, from Fall River, if we could... Our water, our proximity to the water, our coastline is one such feature, but I don't, you know, it's not been, people aren't going to be coming either for business or, well, for living, yes, because it's a nice place to retire in, you know?
Build out the onset waterfront, and figure out how to put a ferry in there to run out to the islands, and everybody's going to stop here.
Yeah.
They will, if we can stop them here before they get to those bridges, I've been going with that bridge five days a week, the entire summer.
Absolutely.
It is a suicide mission.
Absolutely.
And if we can grab them, because the next stop is New Bedford, and anyone coming south from Boston is not going to deviate west into New Bedford, they're just in line with us right now.
Absolutely.
Create a parking location and a ferry that brings you out to the islands, out to P-Town, and you're done. There's no reason to not go to Wareham to onset. Give them a beach where they're here, and they probably won't even get on the boat.
How do you get in and out of Onset?
All the things you're saying will destroy the character. You bring another hundred thousand people in here, it'll destroy the character of the town.
That's a valid statement, too. I mean, Onset is what it is, because it's Onset.
But if you jump in the Wayback Machine, and you don't have to go very far, Onset was depressed, you know?
To go even farther back, it was the highlight of Master Plan.
Exactly. It peaked, and then it was depressed. But small changes, you know, beautification projects...
An active Onset Bay Association.
The, but it was ripe for private investment, and it's paid off. You see houses that you wouldn't give $50,000 for, now somebody bought them, went through them, they're worth a half a million bucks now, you know?
Do you think that would change the character more than all these box stores?
The, well, unfortunately, as you boost your population, you're going to boost your retail, too, right?
All right, to the point, though, the agreement on the master plan, what do people want? You know, the five of us can debate what we think is right here, but we need the...
I think the first thing to do is, everybody read the draft, and...
So, like, I've sent you the three and a half page summary. Take the time to read it, because you're right, you can't read the real one. You fall asleep on page 29, and you've still got eighty pages to go.
I know, but when push comes to shove, isn't that the one that you're going to refer to? That's going to be the bible for guidance going forward, not a summary, right?
Yeah, but what I'm trying to say is, is that, I swear to God, I got it down to three and a half in terms of actionable bullets, in terms of goals and strategy, in fifty-five minutes, every...
Can I ask you a what-if question? If the plan was adopted, because you sound like you know it best of all people, if the plan was adopted, and this group came in front of you tonight...
What group?
The group that needs to adjust the cul-de-sac to put in their cultivation. What would the master plan have responded to them with?
I think the master plan, I mean, it...
Would the master plan allow them to use it for that purpose?
It doesn't go to that level of detail at all. It just, the master plan talks about economic development. Look, I mean, look how high-level these are. But it says there is economic development, it talks about land use, at a very high level.
So how would the master plan have enabled us, or driven us to conclude something different than that decision?
You modify, as it suggested, I looked at section D while you were all talking.
Was it D?
Yeah. One of the things it says is that you modify your zoning regulations to fit the master plan that you've created. So to answer your question, Mark, if you've got a master plan with some guidelines in it, you then take your zoning regulations, and you tweak them, and move them in the direction of that master plan. So if you want the area around Patterson Brook Road to be developed for industry that will provide for potential good-paying jobs that will allow people to work within a reasonable proximity of their workspace, then maybe that's the goal that you set in there, and you tailor your rules or regulations accordingly to match that. And if what they come in with, something like that, you evaluate that, then with respect to what you've changed, as you've made in your zoning, and then you report to the, you look at the master plan and say, okay, this is where we're coming from.
Charlie, wasn't that the plan of...
You can't do it, what's that?
Wasn't that the plan of the Business Overlay District, basically? Was it bringing high-tech, high incomes, and...
Well, that's the pitch that was made, but now you've got to go back and look at the zoning regulations and see what they say. Because all it did was allow for that zone to be used for...
For many different things.
Anything that you want, basically.
Another place was...
It wasn't confined to that type of thing.
Was designated the same, was up at Tyhonen Road. It was going to be a high-tech area. Of course, it never came, they couldn't sell it, private industry, and the next best thing was whatever the dollar would bring, so now it's all solar farms.
Well, it's whatever you establish within your zoning that tells you what's going to happen from there on, so that's...
I don't know what the windshield drive is, but I don't...
It's got to be, the two things have got to be consistent.
Yeah.
Goals and objectives are very, very idealistic. You begin to zero in on them, amongst other things with your zoning, there are other things that were in there. And if you look at section D of chapter forty-one, it basically lists all of the things that you put into a master plan, just like what Richard's been talking about. I think that at some point, it's probably going to take other things, other than zoning, to make it workable, because there's got to be policies and administrative things that come, say, through different boards, and for example, the Conservation Commission, or the Board of Health, or Municipal Maintenance. All of these agencies then would have to look at that master plan and say, okay, what are we doing now that fits that, and what do we need to change to make it fit?
Well, I think...
So that's going to be a long-term process to go through that. Not that you shouldn't, but it will be long-term.
So, we do a lot of public bidding within my company, and on the RFP, they often ask us, tell us why your service is going to benefit us, the public agency. I think we can switch the whole dynamic here by saying to the applicant, some of the more complex projects is, give us the five reasons on why you think your project meets the goals and objectives of our master plan. Force them to read our master plan, and tell us why that type of facility that creates those types of jobs, that produce that type of income, is meeting the spirit of our master plan. Because that takes a big chunk of the work away from us, because now we're just arguing five points here. When you write a plan at a twenty-thousand-foot level, it leaves all this gray space in between for interpretation. Well, I didn't see that's how it was said.
If you go...
But there's nothing in the master plan that is enforceable or etched in stone.
It's a guideline.
It's a guide.
What it allows one agency to say to another is, that is totally, what you're talking about is totally outside the scope of the master plan. That does not line up one bit.
And you know when that happened? Not too long ago? A selectman got up on the floor of the town meeting and changed the master plan so it was.
Changed what?
They changed the verbiage in the master plan, and made it so it looked good on paper.
One of the things to answer Mark's question is to modify what's in your requirements for an impact study. It has three or four very basic things as a statement that you're supposed to outline and discuss, as to what the impacts of your particular proposal are going to have on town services, public safety, traffic, schools. And everybody puts a one-line sentence, not going to have any kids in town.
What'd you say?
That's what they generally do. It's a one-line sentence that said, this is why our project isn't going to impact anything that you're ever going to have to worry about. But it doesn't answer the kind of a question that Mark had, and that's a legitimate question.
It is.
But it has to be, it has to be put into the zoning in such a way that it's clear to them that they've got to do their homework. So, you know, it's going to take some work.
A few years ago, when there was talk of a building moratorium and all that, it was discovered that it wasn't housing stats that created population increases in the schools, it was job growth.
Job growth was driving...
Will give you a more immediate increase in school population than housing stats.
Right, so here we go. Fifty-five to seventy-four, focus on the baby boomers, we don't need any more retail, any more business.
No, science has gotten pretty good.
But they've got six-figure incomes, they're not throwing in kids to the school system, they're not seeking out jobs, they're probably the most responsible taxpayers on the planet. I'm going to die because I'm almost there.
I'm there. Wareham is a unique town. It doesn't fit the norm. You know, that population graph and forecast is, when I first saw that, when I saw that drop in the thirty-five to fifty-five, I was flat, I almost fell out of my chair. That's, I came from a town just the opposite. And so, I mean, we have to consider that, and our master plan needs to reflect that. And I'm adamant about getting this master plan approved, and using it as the bible that we join all our agencies with, to your point about the disconnect. I don't, we don't have a vehicle to tie them together now. And the master plan, in my opinion, is the only thing that can do that. opinion, is the only thing that can do that. And I, and I wanna approve it today, I do, but I, I know that's not gonna happen, but I'm happy with what it says. And I wanted, if people wanna change it, great, let's talk about it. You know, what a great vehicle to have the discussion about where we wanna go. Are the people, the Conservation Commission wants to come here and change the master plan, and present to this board what they think is good, and we can have a discussion about that, and talk about that.
I think it'd be good to just have the plan open right here, and you've got five or six good people here with good heads on their shoulders, they could probably do that.
I, I agree.
But we need to see it.
Richard, can you, you'll send, would you bring, or can you electronically send us the report?
I can't. I will.
Just so that we've reviewed it before the next meeting?
The, the ma, the master plan itself?
No, 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 your presentation's there.
Sure, I'll send you the big one and the short one.
You have it electronically, right?
Yes, I saw PowerPoint.
Rather than bringing it printed into...
No, I'll, I'll send you PDFs, that's what I'll do, email.
Thank you.
Alright, enough.
I did have one thing that I forgot to bring up last time. I have a scheduling conflict with two of the committees that I am appointed to. One is CPC Committee locally, and the other is the SERPED. I'm a SERPED commissioner. And it's been requested that we seek other options, so if anybody here is willing to take over either seat... CPC meets usually twice a month.
Community preservation?
Yeah. Second and fourth Wednesdays. Usually, they're fairly brief meetings. SERPED requires going up to Taunton the fourth Wednesday of the month for a regional meeting.
We get back to you?
Yeah, if anybody, if you'd give that some thought, if you wanna attend a meeting and see what you, try it out, you can do that.
Are both those evening meetings?
Yeah.
So what time's Taunton? Seven o'clock in Taunton?
No. Taunton's, that's early, it's like six.
I thought that was a day meeting.
They do have day meetings, if you, depending on how many committees you wanna be on. CPC meets at six o'clock over next door, and...
Say it was the first and third Wednesdays?
Second and fourth, I think. But like, I would just inform today that there'll be no meeting this Wednesday night for CPC, 'cause the, everything is in place for town meeting already, so there's nothing really to talk about. Community preservation, you solicit grants from people in the community, agencies, even the town, review them, bring them in for interviews, and decide whether or not grants should go to town meeting for a vote. Some of the projects that CPC funds are paid for, have, they've paid for some work at the Little League Field, they're paying for the remediation at Tremont Nail, as well as paid for the purchase of Tremont Nail. What else are they doing? They paid for the concession stand you see back here at the football field, paid for the rehabilitation of some of the historical buildings down on Main Street, and, you know, there's been a lot of projects over the years. They purchased a Bryant Farm property years ago. They, meaning CPC dollars, Community Preservation dollars. So there were always, they paid for the roof at the town hall, and the painting. But SERPED is Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development, and that's what they do. They're involved in, there's representatives there from Mass Highway, they do a lot of transportation planning, they work a lot on regionalization, they come in and do zoning, work with towns on zoning issues, they, you can apply for, I think each community gets 20 hours of work out of them.
What does the agenda look like for that meeting? Do they give each town an opportunity to talk, or ask?
No, they email you the agenda out, a lot of it is, is done by the professionals that work there, and the, the other groups, like Selectman Slaven, and a lot of other subcommittees of SERPED that meet during the day, and, you know, that work on, like, I think, I don't know if he's on the South Coast Rail Committee, but South Coast Rail is a, planning is a part of SERPED. They did a lot of economic, and a lot of the studies you, you quoted probably came from SERPED.
I think that's where the master plan is, is repository that.
Well, they, they did some work on the master plan, they helped work with Ken, probably some of their, yeah, some of their labor was work on that.
George, how long do you gotta fill that seat for? How long are you looking for someone to fill those seats? For a year?
Uh, well, as long as anybody can do it, you know?
I'll volunteer, maybe a little bit.
Pardon?
Anyway, I forgot to bring it up last meeting. I didn't look. A lot of times SERPED doesn't meet in August, but I'll check the calendar. I know they met last month. What else was on there? I don't know, Ken penciled in...
Something about windship drive?
Yeah, I don't know what that's about. Unless it's about the stump removal that we permitted six months ago, I don't know.
They're doing it.
Are they doing it?
Yeah.
And maybe, maybe that's what he meant to tell us.
My wife and I bike down there, it's getting all cleared out. Mr., what's his name?
That's George's uncle.
Yeah, yeah, on the corner there, yeah.
He's gonna come back for his building permit pretty soon.
Yeah, for the llama farm?
Excuse me.
These is neighbors? So, I'm slipping that watch.
So, I think we've covered everything.
Are we going to any executive session?
I think Ken was gonna keep us up to date on...
I think we've lost Ken.
On the litigation, and I think he had an emergency, he had to duck out, so... So I don't think we'll have a need for a second session.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion was, sure you don't wanna stay? Motion was made by Richard, seconded by Mike King. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, unanimous. Meeting adjourned, we'll call it 9:20.
Town will sell those four schools and not be used anymore.
I'm sorry.